So I can't remember what you're talking about.
They're talking about...
Yeah.
What we're talking about.
Um, the way you start talking a little bit of like this going on this.
I know.
You know, like the white angels, they were like, yeah.
Right, I understand.
That's what you're saying, um, that's what you're saying at your school.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, my first I guess three, four A M. And then tell us, like, I have both. I've taken out all my motion detectors. And voters on this girl.
Okay, it's not a little bit of a bigger movie.
You can't, uh, which was.
I have twenty years.
Mike, why is I'm sure.
That's bad. Oh, yeah, I'm not. But that's good. Yeah, as well.
And maybe it was the wind blowing in.
And then I should be, you did.
You got them all right?
Well, I said, just, just.
You got, you got them in.
Oh, yes, yes.
Maybe cage.
All right, too late.
Happy birthday to your husband. I cut it off.
Okay.
It's like somebody already go better.
Then he was like.
Oh, sure.
Hey, Danny, your business is popping green pine.
I'm sure.
So what do we need to change on that present and reduce over there?
It's been more alive.
On the lighting?
Cause what, did you see what Cynthia said? Sam about two hours ago.
No.
Yeah.
No, I did not.
She's kind of summed it up to you. I don't know, probably never on the phone. And she said, you know, just the bottom. Control their man alive, control the height of life.
Yeah, right.
Oh, I, yeah, I'll say that.
True. Other than maybe. I think it's worth something like seven.
Yeah, I'll take people over then.
Absolutely. Whatever love you think.
Oh, yeah.
We're only going with the end of this.
Maybe you don't really do.
Congratulations. Yeah.
Congratulations. My granddaughter is twenty-four years old.
How many inches is she?
She's like this, she's like that.
Before you're ready to.
I have a two week old granddaughter.
Do you really?
Really?
Lots of hair, too, twenty-one inches and nine point.
Ooh.
Uh, nine point eight pounds.
Wow.
Wow, that's a big one.
For my daughter, that's something to say. Oh, yeah, no, I'm. Even if I do my daughter. Nine point.
All these new grandfathers do.
Nine point eight pounds is bigger than both of my twin daughters combined.
Are you serious?
There's more baby than my wife. They must have been.
They were, they were tall, yeah.
Yeah, but it's fine, right?
What are you saying? You go.
That's cool.
Nope, I'm gonna be looking at that. Yeah.
Oh, you don't. You're going to quick on them today? Television.
Right.
Enjoy it. The lighting, what's that? So we're going to Dem City? Television. The lighting?
Lighting for our.
Whatever we have time for, whatever these guys are coming for. And you guys, you guys said what's most important to you as well.
This is the work we do.
I would start with the easy one.
Okay, when you started talking lumens, I read lumens. We had for what? And, uh, yeah. And I saw what you had in here, and I have chocolate all over everything already.
Time out for chocolate, please.
You want some cake?
Oh, probably. What do you get for one birdlet? Let's get on the same page. What's that?
Well, I like the, the, um, the suggestions that you had already sent to us.
On which?
Can we, oh, can we order and do a roll call?
Okay.
Janet, why don't you take a lead on it?
Okay, I was calling this work made in order on the twenty-first of August. For, uh.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen for changing some code. And who's here? Janet Perry or Janet Perez here?
When Doris?
Porstini here.
Bebra is here.
Cynthia, who are your shoes?
Like, she said for five cakes she'd come.
Yeah, she wanted.
No, I'm here.
Did you, you get her email two hours ago?
No, I didn't. I've been, I've been taking her all day. But what you sent us, I think, is good, and I think should be, uh, very long for new projects.
The outdoor.
All new projects.
Are you, um, you saying the whole, the whole thing or what?
Yes, we had some of the stuff that was, um. Most of it was common. Some of it I don't have, but I could eat.
There's one down.
Oh, here we are. You got one.
You got one. Oh, I see. Oh, I didn't know that. I didn't want to get a table. I was, you know, just being respectful on your authority here. Um, even though the code we have, so there's an easy way and then there's a harder way. Cause some of the code is so, um, you have to completely change it. And there's Ivans in the middle of theirs as well. It could be just about theirs, but an easy fix right now is just working a couple of key points on our present code where it doesn't really, uh, the nine hundred lumens for a bulb that doesn't have to be shielded. We could say that has to be shielded, simple fix.
Yeah.
Could immediately fix this.
I don't think the lumens are too high of the sixty watt bulb.
Yeah, that's that.
But it's, but it's.
But it's not shielded.
Unshielded.
Your, your son has a floodlight that sides right in my kitchen room.
Right, and the other, and that's, see, the permanent fixes are addressing those things. It's like the cabinets out there, the same way.
Yeah.
Where they put them in an E that's at an angle, and now it becomes a headlight.
Yeah.
Right.
Effectively, and so we, we need to address all of those things. So it depends on how perfect you want this to be. Cause I like to see those addressed as well, cause I don't like those. Not only have right there either, those kind of lights. So having a color temperature in there, addressing those things about. I just think that we need to, in our building process, we need to identify better what we're expecting. And then have a part of building process, what are we expecting to see their outdoor lighting plan?
How close are Ivans to being done with theirs?
I just, uh, wrote some papers in the middle of it. I'm not sure it's any closer to what we are, but. Um, and I'm not sure we can solve all those problems. This is pretty detailed, but I, you know, having, uh, those are all issues. And so what we might want to do is start jotting down what our goal is. Our goal is to, um, require shielded fixtures or shielded light bulbs.
Yes.
Not based on lumens. So like I have coach lights at my house, and they're probably, you know, I'll bet you're not wanting three hundred lumens coming out. But they're still brighter now than that. Should they be shielded? So I leave them off, cause you know, Paul said it, you know.
Light angels lights, you know how they go up and down. There's a really deep in my house. Our, our end of the street, the boners on downs, really, really, really bright. And, uh, and spotlights.
So someone wanted to make some notes. Um, I just think that that would be a, a hot point that we want to address is are they shielded or not? And then how bright they can be and what temperature that we allow.
Okay.
Cause those are all things that we require a color temperature, say, no more than thirty-two hundred or something.
Yes.
It's kind of a warm white. And we describe it as warm white and plus them.
And I just couldn't see, if it's large swats, I can see the sense of having motion detectors, but just lights, you know. But as long as they're pointing down, and instead of, instead of like your neighbor, I think that's probably best.
Right.
And the Christmas lights, are they being enough at certain time of the year? I really like that one. I'd like to see that one first.
Well, some people want to, the Christmas light thing is, um, I know, like Frank, he put in permanent lights that, you know, they can turn them pink for Valentine's Day or something.
Yeah.
On Halloween, you could.
With the new LED beams, you can make them into colored ones.
And so they're, they're permanently installed, but, you know, they, uh, should be referenced around holidays sometimes instead of all the time.
Halloween, yeah.
But, um, anyway, I think you should drop that one down and, uh, let those, uh, lights in an E at an angle. We should address what our limits are now, that they're shielded and pointed down. Because pointed down, but they're on an E that's at an angle, you know, like on cable. See, that's, uh.
Is that your second one of six, are you?
Yeah. And I like the, I'm, I'm with you on that.
You don't like the second one?
No, the lights.
Oh. I had him there for a second.
Yeah. No, it isn't lights, cause I can.
But I think that it's an important we ask for those, if the rules define better. Cause what happened was, there's a house out in East Bay.
Yeah.
Neighbors were complaining about them, that they're going in, they're not turned on, yeah, they're not even light bulbs screwed into them. You have to, they're clear, they can see they're gonna be a problem. And so, so we go ahead and just write a code violation that these aren't, you know, acceptable, they have to be shielded. And they get looking nuts, it's.
Well, we should know people, yeah, that's what we need to change.
We can go to nine hundred lumens and we're in, keep with your code, he pointed us out, I'm like, wow. That's when brought to our attention, is like, that's not what all of us think would be happening.
Yeah. So. No, I just didn't like the floodlight from my kitchen window, boom, way down the street. I think it's moving in.
What's the point you've been having is it's gonna light up the whole street?
Above us. You know, there's people everywhere that have that, and they light up a half mile away. See them across the highway.
Well, you saw the light that, one of our neighbors, because you saw the light that Mark Kay was gonna light up, that big, uh, lanterns in, at the end of the street. He was gonna put it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You saw it.
Yeah. And he was gonna light that up, and I said, don't you dare. Don't you dare. That'd shine right in my living room. Good to go.
Well, the way I read it, it's already calls for shielding.
Yeah.
It's just, maybe, maybe we need to find shielding better, because this says the horizontal plane.
Well, we've got a chart that has all the, the lighting fixtures.
Well, but the A, the, the first paragraph on that one is defining any greater than nine hundred lumens.
Right, right. Anything lower, you don't, you don't even have to shield it before you do.
Yeah, and that's what I think is the problem, because you can have eight hundred lumens, which is, I mean, I, you go up by spotlights or eight hundred lumens.
Yeah.
And I don't have to shield them, you know, that's, and that's why I think it should be. Warm white and, and even mine, they're amber, and they're only probably three hundred lumens, but they still bother the neighbors, so I turn them off. Or maybe.
Cause I didn't know.
It's not supposed to pass into your neighbor's yard, though, according to the ordinance we have right now. No, I didn't say that. Yes, it does. No, but that's for spotlights. That's on the top. There's an A, and it says that. The B, there's less than ninety degrees, there's no shielding required.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't really come out and say that. It implies it, because it says if it's more than this, it has to be, so obviously with less, it doesn't.
Right, and that's why I think it's, uh. That's an issue.
Well.
That's gotta be tweaked. Right, and that's why we're here.
Okay, another thing I'd like to see them is, um, you take, like, they worked out at Kane, do the Kane and, uh, estates, and do these other two estates, Travis, if they ever get it going. Have you ever seen the, um, the street lights on the way out to Ivan, the, the tree behind? And that's it, and then they got a cone over it. So you can see where you're walking, you can see where you're biking.
But anyways. It's similar to that, oh, well, in fact. And that's what I think Ivans is gonna probably have that type of lighting, and mind to see them. I, you know, I just wanted to talk about the issues, and then this work trying to fix. And it could be, we just tell someone else that it's already done, or are we?
I'm thinking Kuyanta is pretty strict.
Yeah, theirs is real strict. You can't, you know, they're sound.
Maybe if we use that as an example, the top end of this work film, and ours is bottom end or whatever, see where the differences are.
Yeah, I don't think ours is too much different from what Kuyanta does.
Probably not, but there may be some marks in there.
I wish they had a color temperature, maybe we could get a copy there to look at.
They probably do, because it's all dark sky community.
Right, and that's really what our goal is. And, uh, so then we're looking for plans for people that are, that aren't building, at least we start building towards dark sky.
And if you want, you can say, well, it's sort of kind of, then that's what we want.
Well, we need to have a showing.
Rather than going line by line, which would take forever.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we feel there.
And while, and saying, at least we have an idea.
Well, you'd still wanna go look at theirs pretty closely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There may be something we can jury pick out of there.
The only other thing I think is, maybe we should talk about reducing the amount of lumens, uh, allowed. Oh, do you need this eighteen hundred?
Well, that's for floodlights, seventy hundred watts. That's what fifteen?
Wow. But then they lumens, like, they have spotlights or that bright little bird, you know.
But Norman was working for the town, he put a, had to put a security light up here, and it went on because of Lynn. And Dale Harris came over and just got rid of it. Because it's a great idea to take over now. That's why we don't have a light up there. But I think having shielded, um, having shielded floodlights, I think should be much. And, uh.
Yeah, right here doesn't, doesn't really say they need to be. That's, that's not good.
Well, if you have something more than three hundred, two hundred watt, it should be, it's being a consideration.
You're probably gonna lower it.
Probably lower than that. One fifty is like the biggest one you could find anywhere.
Any more, yeah. I've got an old three hundred, if you ever want by.
Make my meters spin twice.
Yeah, it would, it would. But boy, I'm pretty worried.
So we mainly want to get this code down for new construction. Right.
Well.
Well, we're not trying to rush through it, though, as much as identify the problem, come up of what a consensus is between the, if you're looking for it. And then, you know, how you, how you wanna come up with that. What, that means tweeting what we have, or we can look at Kuyanta, we can look at what Ivans is doing. I can get a copy of it, even if I have to ask. I can try and get a copy.
This is from the Dark Sky's website, right?
Dark Sky's website, you can, you can look at that, say, is there anything in there you don't like, and we can just adopt Dark Sky's website.
Okay.
So you're gonna get a copy of the copy, so I'll go through it.
Yeah, I looked on this one online before I sent it to you, and then it sounded really good to me. And being designated to Dark Sky City would be a plus for, uh.
You're talking about the stuff that's attached?
Yeah, I went to the Dark Sky's, uh, website.
Mm-hmm.
To see.
The kind of the generic.
What we have to do.
What they've done is, you know, they've, they've written code that they recommend.
Yeah.
So you could, I just think, why don't we just take time to read the Dark Sky one, and if you like it, if we adopt that one?
Yeah, I'll be honest, I did not go through all that. I was thinking, we have to.
It looks like what you have there is different from what hers is, too. This, this is what I found on their website, and then that's something else she has. Is there a difference? Yeah?
No, sir. Oh, turn back to that footage.
Does it have two sides to it? Okay.
It's a slip.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't understand this split. Why, why is it?
There are. I don't know. What's that that I'm?
Well, let's, let's go through this, and then we can, uh, come together with, well. I think our, our lighting requirements in this city is, is pretty good right now. And I don't, has, uh, has there been any violations of, to, to people upset down?
On the line?
Yeah, except that light might.
There's been situations. Well, I was, I think floodlight should be minimum temporary use.
Yeah, and that's not listed in ours either. And I just think that loading, unloading, and.
Yes, exactly.
That kind of a thing, it's, uh.
No, I had to talk to my neighbor across the street, Dan, because he leaves his lights, floodlights under his garage.
People might say that here, so.
So why don't we go through this, and if you have any concerns, and I just want to through our code to see what.
Yeah, I kind of flipped through all of them. I could see how it could be better.
Yeah, I'd like to see the shorter, instead of light poles, I'd like to see the shorter, uh, street lights that are good for security.
Well, so much of this doesn't really apply, even wherever we do, like underground parking.
Well, let's, talking about parking lots, too.
Yeah, yeah. Parking lot.
And we can really wipe some of that out of it, too.
Yeah, I think we're good. Well, I, I don't think we'd have to put any underground parking.
No. We're beating the wind out of the sow, we go.
Well, if we do, then we would, you know.
Tell me how it, in our.
And this, Laura, about the whole daylighting, that was, then there was really, then you said, no, it wasn't.
I have a neighbor that had to keep their, keep the flicks on all year.
They haven't turned on.
You have a long, you have a long white beard, or. Right near your back there.
Huh?
You have a long, big beard, right there.
No.
Maybe it makes Jen feel happy.
I don't know if it's anything in the night sky ordinance, I didn't see it, but when people have solar lights, is there, should there be like a limit on it where it doesn't look like an airport runway strip, the night sky?
Solar lights, yeah.
Both sellers put themselves down.
And solar's got a shield on top of it.
I know, but they got forty of them on a head.
I'm getting to the point now.
Yeah, but they're only, they're lumens on.
I ordered some the other day, so.
So.
They're so low. I don't collect my little hallways when you see them out, cause you collect.
It's a soft color, it's white.
I have a, I have.
It doesn't have as much soft color as it's solar.
That goes, goes to the overall manner.
Right.
Yeah, I'm a kind of.
This thing, that is not hard.
And there's lots of green pine too.
Marty, this, this thing is hard on, on the order. It shows all the.
I think that's in the, uh, night sky, uh.
Well, it was right, right before it, so.
Maybe, okay, maybe it is, uh, that I found, and not all of it would necessarily even apply, or we would necessarily agree with.
Right.
It was, I put it in there to demonstrate that if we have something like this, that, um, is a victorial, that's part of a billion parts that process. I just want to get this up front, so we have less problems.
I, I think this would be a rude thing to do.
Yeah, we'll put it there.
And so we can go through that, but, well, I don't, I like this one, I don't like that one, cause there could be a couple of them we don't agree with.
No, I think we should put that on there. I agree.
I agree too.
I think it's worth it.
Exactly.
And sixty foot street.
And there's also shows except for.
Yeah. You can have all that at your place? All your, all your lights are underground, right? All your electrical lights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you want to do, Jen? You said you wanted to go through the whole thing, or?
No question.
Oh, I thought you said you did.
No, we want to go through it in our time.
Uh, okay.
And then, uh, and then look at this and, and do it next to our code.
Does anyone, uh, know about the town of Virgin, where we can look theirs and see what they have?
Virgin, except.
Nothing?
Nothing, and they are not a dark sky.
Green deal, probably.
Probably better. I, I could take a look.
I know, there's pretty particular on everything.
Yeah, Rockville, it's true.
Rockville's pretty tight.
Like they have some high street lights on.
Yeah.
Rockville, Rockville's actually overheads.
That, that's probably the, the.
Green deal, you better.
The highway, the state highway.
Well, we kind of want to stay away from that, I would think, with these street lights and telephone poles and.
Well, it's, it's nice to have in the code, so when we, you know, you know, like a Jepsen Canyon comes online or something.
Well, he's the one that had eight three foot street lights, so I'm sure that he's gonna do that, do that thing out here. I hope, but we should have had it in the code, and we should have go to all underground, underground utilities.
I think in that development agreement, we talked about their lighting a little bit, didn't we? For the call.
Well, they've, they've got construction drawings to bring to us, you have to approval and, you know, final plot, all that kind of stuff, so we'll, we'll have opportunity to, you know, look at that stuff. It would actually have the code tweaked by them. And then, and they're, they're actually a dark sky oriented, I highly welcome.
Well, they got Santerio up there, so they're gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
They wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, they're.
Long as they're working, Springville, maybe Longville, just to see what they see. Four, nobody can have, that is a big place. What they got?
They got three lights. Yeah, I think, I don't think they would be.
I think you're easy ones, Jenny, Kuyanta, those guys, I mean, I know they got a lot of C C N Rs in there, but that's three part of it, cause he's just the ticket. Because the, the religion, what we're talking about, those street lights.
Yeah. Underground.
I think we use, bring in, Kuyanta, we gotta, gotta hold will.
Yeah.
I feel like, thank you, boy, you're good, so, so, what else move?
So many people up there.
Yeah, yeah. It's a good place to avoid. That's my opinion.
I remember when I was in high school, there was, two restaurants.
Yeah.
How was that? And, and the Dirt Food Lodge was the only hotel. So what about, I definitely wanted to do the lower street lights.
Or you could give them five dozen charm.
Yeah, I know, cause they're, they're really nice, and they do light up the side lines.
Whatever.
And they do light up the.
I can get a coffee now.
Long as they are a hundred feet long.
Yeah.
They're greater than small.
Yeah, it's good.
You have to throw a lake.
Okay, so we're all gonna, we're all gonna look through this, and any suggestions? We should just bring maybe not to our next meeting, but the ones in August, or in September.
I wanted to look at your dark versus, they got a chart up here, I was wanting to make sure they're, about the same, but now I'm not finding them.
Which one?
Is that the version chart that you had?
Oh, I.
Oh, here it is.
That one? But I think this one's way easier than I printed that one.
Oh, it's just one, sure, right? Five hundred, yeah, they're kind of different.
They're different?
Not a lot, not a lot. This has twelve hundred, it's a seventy-five inch density.
I got that one from you, I'm right with that.
And this one said one point five.
I have a algebra problem, I actually figured it in.
Yeah.
You can send us that on email or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
I went to the site, I went to the site.
Yeah, you did. Okay, so let's all, uh, put our input in on this. I'd like to, one of the lower street lights, I don't want to over hit the street lights. And, um, and then motion detectors, I, I don't see a problem with them, as long as they don't stay on for longer than five minutes.
Yeah, most of them do.
Yeah.
If you ever think of fighting one.
Well, I need, I took, I took all mine off the outside of my house, since I didn't like it. I have a fence now, I don't care. But, um. So let's look at that, and, okay, this is what, uh. Marty's really upset about this recreational, this, uh, vehicles in residential, so.
Oh, the hundred and twenty days? Oh, the hundred and twenty days?
Yeah, I know, I thought that the hundred and twenty days was for RV parks. If it's not for RV parks, we can change that.
I was thinking hundred and twenty, twenty.
It's exact same.
Hundred, hundred eighty for RV parks, I think.
Okay.
Once we, uh, when we did this, we, uh, chatted about how snowbirds would come visit and.
Yeah, at, at RV parks.
Well, I was talking about family, they come visit family, so this was always family oriented, the time that we passed out on the planet.
Yeah, how people are taking advantage.
Yes, I think that's happening and I think that it could be less and I think it, the other thing is should probably say there is per year.
Yeah.
So that hundred and twenty days even per year.
Well, I want to have an exception there, and I want to have an exception that if you're still, if you're building your home and living in an RV.
That's already built.
Yeah, that's, that's already an exception.
It's already built in somewhere else.
Somewhere, somewhere. But it's only a year and I.
Yeah, you do it like for a year while you're building or something.
It's, uh, it was six months.
Six months? Oh, you're right, it did six months.
Wow, you're building.
Well, it is.
Yeah.
Because we stayed way too long.
Yeah.
Good thing I like to point out on this, um, of course you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we really don't have any place where if you're parking a semi trailer on the street, that's a problem. And would this be the right place where you could change this title slightly to include just parking trailers, because we have recreational, private recreational vehicles, um. But that means that someone that has a box trailer or, you know.
Commercial truck.
Commercial, well, even commercial, commercial name type, commercial plot bed, also just even the type that these guys that do construction app, it's just a construction trailer, which is a van type of, you know, double axle trailer, they pull with their pickup.
Yeah.
That's, none of that's addressed here and I don't oppose dress anywhere else and I'm not so sure we shouldn't include it someplace.
Are they dressed normal, often skirted and undiscurt?
Well, I haven't read that there's a separate off-street parking ordinance somewhere.
I can go look at that.
I haven't read it, exactly what it has in it, and I would think it would go with that, but.
Now, Watsel and I have a gooseberry that's got marge.
That's got marge up there?
Yeah.
It's, uh, people parking their trailers or.
Oh, I don't know about the gooseberry thing, but the other thing, what you're saying, we had a problem in Cedar Point, but because it didn't say tractor trailer on it.
On the parking.
Right.
They, well, that'd be a place to change it though.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we do both, but.
I thought Margie and Rich were mostly upset about the Conexes out there.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, and I don't complain, I really.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, and then, but she said somebody is living in an RV.
That's not good, that's.
Then that's not good.
I'm totally not aware of that.
What, I, I was thinking about this a little bit, what do you think about, uh, doing it, allowing ten days for a properly placed RV and somebody staying ten days past that, they come to town and get a permit. And the permit's good for sixty days.
For most of the parks that we stay in are twenty-one days.
Well, for the national parks.
Well, I mean, that's kind of what the rule is in the general area for.
You mean, like your family comes to visit, your grandparents come and you can't see their trailer.
For minutes now starts the clock ticking and.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And I, I'd be tempted to charge him a little bit personally, so you can afford to pay someone.
Well, it's certainly.
Yeah, but there's law things you can.
We can, we can make them prefer.
Not too much of a territory.
The other thing is if we start charging, then you'd also have to redo another section, another section.
To enforce it.
To be able to do that, so. Uh, to answer your question, Forrest, on this, is you do have off-street parking requirements and so we'll look at that in another meeting to improve coverage of things like van trailers and.
What does it, what does it?
How big is it?
Yeah, what does it equip right?
It's only a page, which you probably would.
Doesn't, doesn't really say what it.
So we want to get rid of tractor trailers parking on the street, which is.
I'd say all commercial vehicles.
We have to get some that parked before they find another loophole.
Yeah, yeah, any commercial, yeah.
That's why the sheriff wouldn't do anything, because it wasn't.
Well, St. George, St. George just has that rule.
Commercial.
And, um, my son's street, they have their, their people and they have five trailers and they park them all up down the street.
That's nice.
And, um.
That's a big street.
If you're playing, he'll, he'll do your yard if you stop complaining.
Actually, this.
So you can park, you can park his trailer right near your house.
I got room, I can do my own.
This actually is.
No, I think it's be no comfortable.
This actually has to do with the, a parking lot and.
Oh, okay.
You know, what size space it should be, and off-street parking, how much space it should have.
For a business, in other words.
Yeah, this really doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about.
Okay.
And Florence, how would, how, or Janet and everybody, with as far as the mobile homes and people living in on properties, we've been here almost four years and before we got here on Canyon Drive, there's a lot that has. A mobile home, three or four cars parked in front of it, it's been there for years and they're living in it.
That's grand father.
Well, that's what you want to try and avoid happening in the future.
Yeah.
There's that one, we can deal with whatever.
That, that's a case, that like you said, I mean, the ship has sailed on that one.
Yeah, on that one, but we can make sure that it doesn't happen.
Right.
We just gotta stop it from happening.
Well, I think we have, that you have to have either a manufactured home or be building a home, and this you can't have, I don't know.
Well, if you're on mobile home, you're supposed to be in mobile home park.
Yeah, you are.
Like where does the waves go and everything?
I heard they were.
Talking wrong.
They're, they're down the septic.
I heard they were hooked up to septic and power from the Coke's house, apparently, that's right here.
Yeah.
Let's hope, if not, they dug a hole or something.
Yeah.
They dug a hole.
Like you said, that one I don't think we can do anything about, but going forward, there's got to be some restrictions to do that, definitely.
So you say a hundred and twenty days a year?
I think that's excessive.
I think that's excessive, I, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with sixty personally, I mean, what?
How about twenty-one? I think I'd draw a percentage.
But it's kind of compromised, it's like twenty-one, but you still have to have a permit so that we can go check on you on day twenty-five.
No, you go move out.
Yeah, well, who's gonna?
What's, what's to stop somebody from doing twenty-one days, leaving, going silent and then come back?
That's why you want a permit, so.
And that's why Marty said per year.
Yeah, right, and you just do one of these permits per year.
That's what they do in the national parks, they move it five foot and over.
Then it starts over again.
Uh, I would probably write it so that you couldn't do sixty days to the end of January and then pick up another permit and do sixty days of the first of January.
Yeah.
I said there, well, December, first of January.
I think we had addresses at one time, it was Frank, didn't we?
He was, he wanted the hundred and twenty days for a sickly.
Yeah, yeah.
For RV parks.
No, 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 this was in.
Just, just for sickly.
Sickly related and somebody was moving in.
Right. Now, I don't think it had changed, but there was that discussion.
Right.
There was this discussion, yeah.
Yeah, it was.
But, you know, to me, if somebody's that sick, they need to be living in a house, not.
Yes.
Not a trailer.
Well, they're putting a tick piece on the house.
Well, maybe they are.
Caretakers will be the ones living in RV at Southern Dollar, come and say.
Well, I don't know, it's.
Well, we could just say hundred and twenty days per calendar year, it doesn't have to be long.
Okay, I, I agree with that.
Per calendar year, then we don't have to worry about.
Because I think they have people to get their debts for them.
So just change that last.
Just add, just add per calendar year at the end with. It'll catch.
But that, you do realize that people would say they could do two hundred and forty days if you, if you see what I'm saying, if they do the hundred and twenty days.
September to December and then January.
That's still single calendar year, though.
And three hundred and fifty days, whether when you started.
Calendar year.
No, but I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I, I think December is a hundred and twenty probably.
Right, so you give you two hundred and forty days out of that.
April.
Day period, it's not a calendar year, I understand that.
Well, it would go by year and count by years. Of two forty consecutive days, basically.
Right, so that's.
No concurrent stays, something like that.
I just think per calendar year, per three hundred and sixty-five. From twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
There's, there's still gonna be people that go to the full two forty, or unless we figure out somebody to force it, there're gonna be more than that, but.
So are we saying per calendar year?
I see what you're getting at, that they could really take advantage of that.
I'm pretty certain the town loses track of who's, is it, they're losing track of the fact that somebody's even staying in that place, much less how long we've been there, and I'm not sure a hundred and twenty is something much.
Marty, instead of a permit, can we just get, uh, permission from the town?
Well, permit is permission and I would, I would think that we could figure out a mechanism of providing those at no charge is, in other words, is they have to have a permit to do that and then it gives us an official way of identifying them that.
Yeah, because they're certainly.
They're only valid for this period of time, your permit's good from this time to this time.
Can you, can we do like a temporary occupancy?
Well, I, I don't know that I can achieve the right term, but I would just say that if someone's living in that thing, in someone's yard, it should have a couple of rules I'd like to see in their location.
Well, yeah, that, that.
The front yard would be nice to limit, but we have so many people without a backyard.
Yeah.
It's not realistic that that's probably apply, but, but at least they have in that, like you guys are talking about, having a limit and having a permit and then they gotta come in and talk to Ben. He filled out a piece of paper and then he has something he can track, he'll know on a spreadsheet when they showed up and when they're supposed to be out, we drive by and they leave.
That's what we need.
And make it no charge where it's not an, there's no reason. Anytime we have one show up, we can set up.
If we give them a permit, we're basically okaying it, are we taking on any liability for the safety of that trailer that they're staying in? Since we're not inspecting it and giving a certificate of occupancy, do we have any liability?
About a C of O, I don't think so, but if it's just example part.
Well.
Occupancy.
Yeah, but, now the way I read it, don't.
You have to do a C on without inspecting everything.
The, the only, the only people that can do that, the way I'm reading all this, is, is if somebody owns that RV, if the landowner owns that RV, they can't. In other words, if you read this, you can't bring in cousin George in his RV and park him out there. That's not what this says.
My neighbor. So is it the one owned by the owner?
That's what it says.
My neighbor does, shuffles an RV between a gooseberry and his place.
I, I would even be, I like to disagree, uh, that, though, for me, the purpose of this is that my brother's in town, he has an RV and he wants to stay in his RV outside of my house.
Yeah.
And that's kind of the purpose of it, so getting a permit saying that he showed up at this time, he's gonna stay for two weeks, that kind of a thing, that's what we're trying to put on notice, or that there's a timeframe or time limit.
We need, we need to change that first sentence then, because it says another recreational vehicles equipped only by the property owner, maybe for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause that, that's the whole thing, is it, is this is all referring to that landowner's.
Well, to me, it was, I, I could be wrong on this, I'll just give you my, my take on it, is if the guy's got an RV, you don't want people living in it anyway. You know, but if it's told by someone else, because they're visiting, that's the kind of person we're allowing to, to, you know, an exception to, because they're from out of town, they come to visit, mostly in an RV. That's the kind of people we want to give exception to, the guy that lives there and owns it and is putting someone up in it, that's the, we have that in the B and B regulation, but you gotta just get the second, I don't want to say it, but.
So you're granting a temporary parking allowance for the.
Parking.
Yeah, and then any.
And you got no liability, right? You're giving them permission to park.
Well, first of all, I don't think you have any liability anyways, the RV, they own it, they want it.
They've got the insurance.
Right. But, yeah, I, you have some good points. Clean that stuff up, I thought Neil Alicia would, what it sounded like.
Yeah, I think getting a, a parking permit for out of town visitors is very good idea.
Yeah, we didn't say any, any recreational vehicle not owned by the landlord.
In, 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 never F C there, yeah, I, I have no problem with.
And, uh.
That way you're just letting your parents, the people know that they're, you know, kind of ridiculous, like they're, uh.
And then when you have owned a recreational vehicle, you shouldn't have extended people, people staying there for extended.
Well, unless they're sickly, like we've kind of gone over, you might, you might have a sick cousin George that doesn't have an RV and you want to put him in yours.
I told you, Uncle George.
Yes.
We can't, they can't live in a tent.
I don't know. Well, I'd like to see, yeah, I, I have no problem changing that C to anybody's recreational vehicle, I guess. Um, I would like to see it parked in the side yard or in the back.
Yes.
But.
Yeah.
Most people are gonna argue with that, so.
Yeah, if you don't have that C.
Right, and even, even if they have the space and they have the RV, now what?
Yeah.
But why letting, letting an RV park in front of somebody's home for sixty days or whatever?
In Cedar Point, we have a lot of, well, poor homes that have the RVs parked right in driveway.
In, in the front?
Right, because most of the side yards.
There are no.
Aren't big enough.
Right.
And we're finding that out now with selling the house, there's not enough space inside the house.
That's, that's trouble, they're supposed to be parked in a.
That's why we changed the garage size.
Yeah.
No, we're not going there.
No, we're not good grudges again.
Okay, well, I, the, RVs should pack, be packed, uh, for in back of the house or on the side, not the front.
Well, but since that, in number eight?
Yeah, it says a A, but, uh, that's still there, you're really talking about the owner's vehicle at that point, if we change this other one to where it's not the owner's, then you kind of changed.
C, so we're talking about C.
Or you can add a D, which is.
Yeah.
A different deal.
Yeah, which is somebody.
Not, 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 not C too much.
Right.
D as, as any RV that's not owned by the owner.
No renting out of RVs.
RV not owned.
By the owner, really.
Well, what would, what would like?
I'd be occupied.
I'd like to get a parking permit, I think that's a really good idea.
I think.
If that way we can keep track of who's here and how long they're here.
Yeah, and just say, oh, it will be required for that type of vehicle.
If you're not occupied or.
If there is no parking spot beside the front, maybe make the permit shorter or something.
Well, make it renewable every week and it can just say, hey.
Yeah, we, we, I, I don't think I like the idea of somebody parking in the front of their house for a hundred and twenty days, then you've got, that'd be probably, or actually two hundred and forty days, whatever.
No, it's good, probably limited to two weeks or something, thirty days.
There's so, so many people that push themselves against them or to the cliff edge that behind the house, there isn't a room.
Yeah.
And there's so many people who have a situation.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if we, do you want to park behind your house, you know?
My house?
There's rocks back there.
There's rocks, you can't park behind it.
Oh, it's too, yeah, rocks, I got.
So you, there's tons of people like that, so.
Yeah.
Well, I have, I have an RV spot, but the dog, I think side yard would be, you know, very, but, you know.
Yeah, long time.
Side yard in the back as far as you can, but.
We could say something like even a, you know, front setback, which is at least first twenty-five feet, but.
Twenty-five feet.
You know, there's, uh, there's tons of people that are just against the cliff, there's one right down the street on Rowway, it's, they've been there since, uh, for four months, right now.
On Rowway?
They've pretty much moved in and the canopy's making it look like they're not going anywhere. That's the primary, I think we ought to get a permit, if you don't park your RV here, you have to.
That means you're gonna keep an eye on it.
Yeah, three.
And how many days are we?
How many days?
Twenty-one, I think it's.
Did we say twenty-one on visitors?
I think it's a little short, but, you know, it's.
I'd go thirty days, so.
Thirty thirty.
Three thirty, maybe.
Maybe it's a longer.
Thirty makes sense, it really does to me.
Most people, I mean, I would.
Thirty is staying, you know.
I would stay for a month, but not longer.
We're, we're talking about, this is a new, a new pair of.
Number eight.
Okay.
Thirty days.
Day, thirty days and permit required.
My handwriting sucks.
So is he just saying that one?
Let me, let me have it.
Yeah.
Let me have, go on. Let me add, go on a limb here, I'll just say.
Per calendar year.
I tried for sixty, nope.
Let me just go on a limb here, that the in-laws coming to visit, and they come for three weeks. And they come back six months later and they want to stay another three weeks. I mean, is it reasonable that?
Well, if they're getting a permit, and we know they're doing it. On D, I don't think we should say thirty days per calendar year. I think that's the important on C.
Thirty days, thirty days per, per visit.
Thirty days, yeah, and we're not gonna say per year or anything.
Then you're back to them leaving for a couple of days and going up to.
Well, that's why, that's why I suggested maybe it's sixty per calendar year or something, but only thirty days at a time. But, you know, at least seven days in between, or, you know, you can name it however you want, but.
Yeah.
You know, we don't want them to leave like he said for one day and then.
And then they're gonna get a permit for another three days.
Not a long.
And we didn't say thirty days per vehicle, and if they wanna stay longer, they gotta get a new RV.
I'm sure you'll come downtown looking.
Okay, so thirty day permit required.
For, for non-owner.
Non-resident.
RV, non-resident.
Property owner.
Yes. Non-resident, yes. And.
Non-resident RV parking.
Yeah.
Did we say for a year or, or we didn't say?
No, I just said for thirty day permit. They might have to come in and justify it.
You might have two, three different friends or relatives come during the year.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Somebody come over.
Maybe you got your family reunion, and then you got your wife's family reunion, and your class reunion or whatever. Let's stretch this out.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be gone for many days, but the case.
No, let's not do that. I think a thirty day parking permit required for non-residents, RV parking is good.
I'm trying.
I don't think RVs should be rented out as rentals.
Oh, no, that's, that's a different order, you can't do that.
Park, I'm trying to park it. I fully don't think they just do it anymore.
Preferably side, side or back, not too.
On the side ladder, lot or rear, lot where.
Side.
You can put it in there and maybe that's closer than that.
Side or rear, because I have nothing but rocks when I'm here.
Where, when possible.
We're, we're probably borrowing trouble here, thinking everybody's going to try to abuse this, maybe they're not.
No, I just, if there's somebody that's renting an RV, you need to outuse very, and.
That's not.
There is on a private property.
It's already against the rules too.
That's a no-no.
Yeah.
That's what I talked to. I know it is in the B and Bs, cause my next door neighbor has an Airbnb and he rents out a little RV, he brings a little RV and rents that out of his room. And, you know, I keep telling him, I said, Steve, you can't do that. He's allowed it in a room, I guess.
Okay, well, that's.
My girlfriend lives out at Gooseberry and she has it out there, so they switch it back for.
I guess I'm just blind into it all.
I know, I am too, lots of traffic.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, who's.
We should have Margie, Margie here, cause she's the one that wanted this brought up, cause uh.
Well, it'd be good to know where it is, so we can watch for it.
Yeah.
We, we can, somebody write it up and we can bring it up at the next place.
Yeah, we'll, we'll tweak it.
And Margie will be there, well, I think Margie would be there, I don't know.
We'll just get.
We have a meeting in a week, right?
Right.
Yeah, we'll just get a start, head start out and we can tweak it a little.
Okay, so let's, let's look at this and we'll put this on our calendar for uh, next week.
Twenty eight, no, forty?
Twenty eight. Yeah.
Sixty for August twenty eighth. This with this, we can go all the way up to September, October, I think it's this.
Yeah, we'll just push that.
Because I think we're in a lot of, at least places we're in compliance already, there's just a few things.
Right, well, but, but if there's just a few things, maybe we can squeeze that out.
Well, we need our research.
We need your research.
We need more time, I think, than we.
For this?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I said, uh, September twenty eighth. We can look at this.
Okay.
Okay?
September, yeah, that's not that far.
But then this, this, I'm making a little hard job, I know what she's driving about.
Right.
And she doesn't tell me anything, she just goes, we can't do this anymore.
There's the, there's the, the, the.
So we'll put this on our calendar for October twenty eighth, and I'll get ahold of her, and she was.
October twenty eighth?
Or twenty eighth.
Oh, oh.
On Debbie and Rich's problem, if they ever move that thing, then you've got them. I mean, if they move it, if you go get gas or something?
They've been at, oh, the, the.
The RV.
It hasn't moved in years.
Really?
Is it, is it that, a mobile one?
It's just in the middle of somebody's property. We don't even know if that property belongs to.
I was talking about the RV, you said.
It's a mobile one.
Mobile one.
We do have multiple RVs in our.
But that's the same, if they remove, then they're, they're not, then you can hit one that's new.
Yeah, but this, this is a.
It's been there for a long, it's incorporated and.
They got a, they got a mass going to the house for the power, and I assume they have something. So it's a, it's permanent, it's a permanent structure at this point.
Okay, so I'll just try and, I think we'll fine tune and get the language done for that, and I'll contact Margie. And I do email you, so email me back.
Yeah, I, I read, I saw your email, I just didn't read it, sorry. I'm kinda busy, but I don't want.
I know, I am too, and then uh, ten two eight two three zero accessory building accessory use. This is for the.
This is for the containers.
Container, I think we should.
Think what?
I think we should.
Just not, well, if you read this, you're not supposed to have shipping containers.
Yeah, we're just containers.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure, I don't really know.
Why, why do we have any?
So in the, when this was adopted, I listened to both the planning commission and the town council. And the intent of this code was just to make sure that they were the smaller ones, nothing bigger than two hundred square feet. And they specifically said paint only. So this is very, the interpretation here, that, that, the way I read it says, if you have a stucco home, it has to be stucco.
Right.
In that meeting, it was very clear that, that it was, it was twice asked for clarification.
Yeah.
What that meant, and they said, the color has to match, just the paint. That's caused some confusion for people that have it for a number of years.
So how long ago was the meeting?
Two thousand and ten.
Well, it's been certainly since then, hasn't it?
Yes, there has been.
Well, I mean, about this is what.
Yes, there has been, and every time a shipping container ended up on our street, we've gotten rid of it.
Uh-huh. Well, if you read this, I, I don't see how you, unless you make it look really close to the building, cause that's in uh.
Well, we heard me, we heard, didn't get rid of theirs, so it got flooded.
If, if.
The one that was the Harley Davidson center.
The town has been allowing them as long as they were painted, so that's why there's quite a few that are, that are, that met the definition, the interpretation of that definition.
Yeah.
But yeah, I, I agree with you on that, that, that the way that it reads it, it.
Right.
There, there is not a single container in town that is, that actually matches the architectural style.
Well, you hear that a shipping container, right, you just build a, get one of those Home Depot sheds, you know?
Yeah.
It looks like your house.
Containers are cheaper.
Yeah, containers are actually cheaper, they give away.
Yeah, it's right in your room.
They're ugly. My son has to build a house out of them.
People do that, but normally they put them underground, so you don't see them.
Yeah, well, if they're underground, I don't think anybody, yeah, but.
No, they just put it the side of the front, they really didn't move.
But this is adopted, uh, six twelve nineteen, no shipping containers.
Well, it was, that, that wording was way before that.
Six twelve was just the, um, when we voted to accept this version of it.
But that's what we did.
If you look at, read F on that.
Right. F, F has it covered, it looks to me.
And F says that it has to be a similar materials and colors, architectural style, and so you could just copy that, paste it right down, get rid of the word no.
And copy and paste.
Semi-containers and boom, this is the requirement for them.
Well, but, but you've already, you've already done that, really, because it says it has to meet the requirements of this section, and that's one of the requirements of this section, they.
Well, that's what it's confused, is get rid of the, um, ambiguity, if someone can read that and not. If it was in the same bullet point, you know, there's no doubt that it's gotta be the same architectural style. But the other thing is, is there's no length limit in here, and I think that if you're gonna put a length limit, these forty footers, they look like a commercial.
Now, the limit on the, with the length would be the, um, the overall length, if it exceeds the two hundred square feet allowance, then you'd need a building permit.
Right, but they could still do a forty footer with a building permit.
Right.
And if you just say the, the most they can have is a twenty footer, which changes it.
As long as they made it match.
If that's important to you, you know, that's just, might do sense on it.
Well, I, I know what you're saying, I just think there's a lot of, um, requirements that are in other places that, that they need to read also. They need to read all their requirements.
Yeah, no accessory building should be rented to the street, is that believable? Six about.
If you have a one, if you stand up, no accessory buildings can be made out of shipping containers, I need to put a survey online, and we need to do a lot of, um, asking the public how they feel about that, because we just can't go and change it and say, no shipping containers anymore at all. Like, right now, we're just trying to clean up how it's stated, cause right now, it's not cleanly stated. I agree with you that it says that you gotta do this or that, but.
Well, it's not all places, I just.
We could, we could basically change this code, copy and paste it down there, and not even have a public hearing, because we haven't changed anything.
Right, right.
And. You know, but.
Yeah, you say copy and paste, yeah, yeah.
But, but it's, it's the code, I mean, effectively, we haven't changed anything.
Right.
If you have a length change, that would require a public hearing, you know?
Well, we gotta keep, we gotta keep like box trailers, something, they had a box trailer at house, right by the South Central Building. They got a whole truck back there. Behind all the other crap.
Behind all the little tents?
Yeah, there's a semi-truck back there.
Is that a truck? Are you talking about the RVs or?
Yeah.
Is that RVs that have?
Yeah. I wish there was something we could do for them. I'd sure like to see that.
I thought that a church group was lying in and helping clean up.
That was one of the cases I was talking about, they got insulted.
They got insulted?
When, cause Frank told me they had offered, but they didn't want the charity, they felt that they were getting kind of stepped on. And they didn't want the town coming and helping them.
Oh, okay. Thank trees. Well, instead of having the no shipping containers here, um, we have shipping containers with the outbuildings, sorry, where we really define it, how you can have it.
Yeah, if, um, I just like finding that one pair of that at least, and we could do that really, if you guys are okay with it, without changing anything.
Yeah, let's just do that.
I'll find it by a little bit.
I'm finding it too.
Do we, do we need to put something about size on here, are we okay with these forty footers if they do?
No, it's two hundred, two hundred square feet, and that is on the accessory building.
But a two hundred square foot building?
You don't have to get a building permit.
Right, you don't have to do anything.
Of course you say that.
I, I don't.
Um.
That was in our garage.
Somewhere else.
That was in our garage, it was in accessory outbuildings that we did.
Yeah, if it's less than, I think if it's less than two hundred square feet.
Square feet, yes.
You, you don't, you don't have to do anything.
Right.
That's the way I understand it.
Except make it look like your house.
I don't think you have to do that.
Really?
I don't.
Please pay it in.
I, I'd have to, I think it's in the same chapter, um.
I know we don't, it's in garages and, and, and outbuildings. And here, I could just read a lot of the same thing over again.
Yeah, a lot of them, it's pretty familiar.
Do you remember that big man?
Another building permit required.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
It actually doesn't say, uh, that it has to match or anything, it just says, buildings under two hundred square feet in area do not require building permit, period.
So we don't, if you, if you live with these, the less than two hundred, you've kind of, you're, you're in conflict with yourself.
Well, yeah, but if you sell it out, shipping containers have to, but the law, I think you're.
Any size shipping container.
I think that Margie said copy and paste the requirements of the shipping container, cause that's already gone through public.
But, but we're okay with forty footers?
Forty footers, you gotta get, uh, building permit to do, you have to have electrical.
We don't have to.
Well, you just have to get a.
You have to get a permit.
You have to get a permit from the town, because.
Anything over two hundred.
Uh, or anything over two hundred square feet.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying.
My, my grandpa did, because they haven't made the, the rules yet, but my shed, we have to keep it.
But, but there again, to give them the permit, then you have to point out to them that, have you read this part? Says, you gotta end up looking like your house. The accessory building, not, not the person, they don't have to end up looking like that. Ask them to look like that, there's a difference there.
Uh, just one comment, if you have a, something under two hundred square foot, you bring power to it though, then you need a permit, right?
You need a permit, yes.
Anytime you need any utilities.
Right.
So yeah, just copy and paste is the way we go.
Yeah, just copy and paste.
If everybody's good with forty footers, I don't, I think if you're gonna have, I don't care whether it's forty or whatever.
Two hundred.
Now, isn't there some way that you can take two forties and make it eighty, and we don't particularly like that?
Why would somebody wanna do that?
I don't know, but I think I've heard that.
You can't, uh, because if it's two buildings, then you have to have at least have to be a part of it, setbacks are per building.
Yeah, and I think you've got a lot of other.
But if they're attached, it's one building.
They weld them together.
Yeah. I don't, I think anybody's gonna do that, but I think I have heard of it.
I have three of them.
Two shipping containers.
They've got them in the U shape, these are all connected.
Right.
The patio's in the center.
I don't know what that's.
They do that.
They just do that.
I think the way that.
So maybe, maybe we could limit it to just one forty footer somewhere else.
Shipping over.
Okay, would that make any sense, just limit, if you're gonna have shipping containers, like one?
No, they have four.
But then they shouldn't be there at night.
And, uh, the.
It's all, they'll probably be four. I should see your. Yeah.
Yeah, you're talking about something.
Yeah, well, when the cost, they try to.
It's so far out.
Right, yeah, no, I've, I've heard that story.
There's, there's some, uh, all things.
Right, yeah, I keep hearing those things, I.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna take of the experience of people.
Well, we can't cover.
Yeah.
We can, we can.
Not saying no everything.
But I think that, uh, the shipping containers, we strike the no, cause they're good at doing it. But it has to match the house, and we just copy and paste.
Yeah.
Copy and paste, it's already been approved.
Well, I went with that, what does it say? Accessory buildings are separate agricultural use, so we're not doing that. Shall be constructed of similar materials, so does that mean they have to put something over that metal?
Well, some material.
That's the way I read it, I mean, if they got a wooden house.
They would have to match their, their basic structure either.
Well, it's a similar.
Siding, carving, something, you can't leave it metal with lettering on it.
So yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. So, yeah, I'm, I'm good with, I don't remember if it's copy and paste.
Yeah, copy and paste.
One question, is that a roof pitch?
Well, that's included under that architectural style. If they're gonna do this, they've gotta put the same type roof, I would think, wouldn't you? I don't know.
That, that's what I did, I have an agricultural building, but mine's got a green metal roof, just like my house. And then it's got green board to match my green siding.
Yeah, the.
And it.
Part of the side. And that, it's a huge painting, nobody can see it.
To me, like, you get a new roof, you'd be just as well starting from scratch, I don't know. But I don't know, construction. I don't know, I. You want that, I don't want that.
Yeah. I think we just copy and paste on that one. Cause anything over two hundred square feet, they've got it come together. Anything like a vine has to get a building permit. And now, the city would know what's going on.
Right. Well, the.
Nothing K.
Right.
Cause I'd like to copy and paste as much as we can to just make sure that people get it. And it's already gone through the public hearing. And, uh. Can we look at the again on the agenda, the resident, uh, parking requirements of private vehicles in residential zones? We need that, we need that to say, uh, commercial vehicles, I think, like, especially out of Cedar Point and place small places, smaller lots. And paved roads, there should be no commercial vehicles or tractor trailers, but over.
I'm a true girl. I'm an improved girl.
Yeah, I'm improved girl.
If you're gonna do that, you gotta change the heading, it's, it's, nobody's gonna know where to look.
Let's, uh, yeah, let's, let's do some research on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I'd like, you know.
It's a good idea, the judge is not sure if it's here.
Well, safety is just, now, I think we gotta follow suit because we're gonna run into problems. If we have like crafts maintenance people, the block trailers and, and builders, or they're just there during the day, so.
Right, and make their fur out. And make their fur.
Yeah. And redoing the map.
So, we're just, are we going to the density?
Yeah, I thought we were just looking at the legend, but I, I don't really know what plan this year.
Uh, Cynthia and I, Cynthia and I have talked about two days.
Uh, oh, oh, good.
She was gonna bring mine and I was gonna talk to her.
They were after.
Yeah, you're up.
The density is easy to handle.
Okay, well, we'll bring up the, uh, the RV vehicles in residential on August twentieth. And I'll make sure Margaret's here to express her opinion on that. And the lighting thing, hold on, but please study it, so we can do it in October.
We get, we get our information.
Because we're running it.
We want him lighting our judge of Cayman and Travis and if they were to try to leave, we want them to have, what do you say that?
It's hard on my, my friend UC over there too, so we want all that to be here. Is there anything else?
The density.
Density.
Yes, I have, I have a suggestion.
It's ten acres, right? Or five acres?
Well, could you, would you be willing to hear my?
Sure.
Okay, high density, any development with parcels up to one acre.
Uh, how do you do it?
Medium density, any development with parcels above one acre, under five acres. Low density, any development with parcels, five acres and above.
Okay. We already have some, uh, with half acre lots.
That's.
That's the.
One acre and below.
That's.
High density.
Okay.
So you're, you're saying a one acre low is high density?
Yes.
One acre and below, below one acre.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Up to one acre would be high density. The medium would be above one acre.
One to five.
Hang on.
One to five is one to five?
Slowly, slowly.
Go ahead.
One third to one acre would be?
One, one fourth, one fourth.
Oh, are we wanting any?
Is it, what's Joseph Canyon, aren't they one thirty acres and above?
They're, they're PD, it doesn't really matter. They're like a PD.
Yeah.
They can be whatever they want.
I thought we weren't gonna go below half acre.
No, it's all the, it's all four acres, all the books.
They, all the books already.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't like the.
What they, what they are doing is they look at the density per the development acres. So they have enough open space if they're only at a half acre, not include the golf course.
Yeah.
If you include the golf course, they're like one acre. Uh, density.
Why, I have to do something with high density.
So they have, they have enough open space if they're still only half, even though they're on course, quarter acre lots.
So you, you said high density, any.
Is that two acre?
Quarter acre to one acre.
Yes.
Now, what did you say about?
And then I said, any development with parcels above one acre and under five acres.
Okay, one to five is medium.
And then low density would be any development with parcels, five acres and above.
Above.
But my suggestion, you guys can move.
No, it looks good, it's, now, we might keep bubbling wells at low.
So, that pretty much says.
Bubbling wells, we really wanna keep low.
Right.
Right.
Well, except some of the thirds, own differently. Mine is half acre.
Well, we're, yeah, we're.
You got two left, though, I looked at the, yeah. But you got a lot in your mind.
But at one time, before we purchased it, it was scheduled to be a trailer park.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't have been.
So that's why it's all half acre lot.
Yeah.
But again, the general plan can be in opposition, right, current.
Right, it does.
There are smaller lots.
Yeah, there's, there's some things going on there.
There's smaller lots where that cul-de-sac is, right?
The three acres and two acres, yeah.
Yeah. And how much is yours? I know you've got two together.
Two fives.
Two fives?
Yeah.
And you don't want a whole bunch of neighbors.
No, 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 I'm just saying, that was the, what was there when we purchased it.
I'm glad you purchased it.
And we'd be, they'd want to do that.
I'm glad you didn't want to do that. Cause we do want to keep public.
So, so.
Twenty shipping containers.
So, Lee, beside that area, are we in conflict with this, that you?
No, I'm the only area that has that.
Okay, and that's, that's out of the equation now, because you own it.
Right, well, I have to develop it, which I didn't know what to do.
Okay.
But I, at some point, I'd like to get a change away from that, so the future owners can't do it.
Yes, and this would pretty much lock that down at the most part.
Well, if you change the different plan, all, all we're looking at right now is just the, uh.
Just the.
Just the legend.
Yeah.
And I want, I want to point out on your legend of where it's high density, we need to slip something in about multifamily and everything.
And out there, it's, it's more high, high density for agriculture.
What is that?
Mostly.
Kind of probably, probably most.
Mostly egg.
Oh, or a half acre?
Half acre, one acre. It's all over, uh, some commercial, there's lots of good.
This is why I bought that, I'm gonna change that now.
Or, look, Max, we didn't change this for sure.
Yeah, this is definitely one for one and, cause bubbling wells area needs to be kept. And then on the other side, uh, it's on the, I think you should have kept, uh, bigger lots. Or Main Street. There's a lot of farms over there. It wants to do.
I, I think you could balance that way, making some of this off to the west, uh, bigger also.
Oh, where's Main Street on this?
That's the big blue line going up and down. That, that should never have been put there before.
Hey, we have no manufacturing.
Well, actually, we do sometimes.
I, I manufacture, and I manufacture.
We're, we have a few parcels that are manufactured, not some of the work.
What do we manufacture?
Far west, southwest corner of.
Uh.
By the turf farms, old turf farm.
I was thinking. Well, oh, yeah, there's some, just, just, uh, maybe it's somewhere close to where the, uh.
We need to, we need to change.
Yeah, I think you're right.
We need to change this.
Well, we're, no. We've been, we've been talking about for, gosh, it was not being proved in.
Years.
That's getting a bit of a.
Why do you have to wait for me?
Well.
You think about, they highlighted it personally.
Yeah, personally.
But, yeah, the, the, this.
But I, I agree.
Really hard, it's quite, it's not.
A way to recolor it or something.
Okay, but I, I agree with Rick's, that the density.
I don't think that's how bad it's, um.
I don't either.
What was, what was your suggestion now about the multi-housing though?
That, that needs to go in high density somewhere. For apartments and all.
Oh, right, I got you.
Cause it's something that we're.
Cause we have to have some for, uh, to fall.
Okay, so like you said.
Cause it's separate thing.
Well, I'd just put it up in the center, but it could be the white though.
I guess it's good, they're gonna be.
Now, that, that only gives us three.
We need something that's.
Three, three. Well, we have five, oh, well, we still, we still have to have the, uh, PD or PUD or whatever you call it. So that's four.
We have, oh, we have four of those. Four, five.
Five.
Yeah. Cayman.
Cayman?
Cayman.
That's not a planned building.
There's one up there.
There's a planned building in Cayman? You're serious?
And one up here above you, that one. One out here on the highway, just cuts the middle off. And then the one going down, uh, to the other street.
Well, we need, we need to look at a map, some, I never heard about all this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, here, here, yes, it's Travis, it's, uh, what Travis is trying to do.
Oh, oh, what, yeah, what he's trying to do, I thought you were saying it's ineffective. Yeah, I, I thought you were saying it's ineffective and not.
No, no, nothing happened.
Yeah, okay. Don't scare.
You're getting ready.
Don't scare me. But at least now he's not gonna go wrong way, he's gonna have to fight you at the main street to go on top of you.
I didn't know, I didn't know where he was.
Yeah, they, I don't have a lot to talk and I don't care.
Um, yeah, I, definitely, anytime we wanna get together and start talking about even just sections of this.
Okay.
And then what we do, maybe do the, the black and white.
I have one, right here.
Okay.
I'd also like to.
Then we can do wax pencil, like.
Right.
Wax pencil one.
Yeah.
When we, uh, look at changing other areas, I'd like to, uh, coordinate that and we put up, um, some type of a survey. Those living in that area, especially or even the whole town, wouldn't affect the whole town. And that way, we have something we can fall back on, say, there are people.
Do it just like you did the bubbling wells and we might find out, everybody wants five acres, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's, and, well, I'm just talking about when you were saying that, oh, no more commercial here, things like that. Let's get feedback, so we have, we're not just doing what we want, we're doing what people want.
They want commercials, they want some restaurants. I'm tired of cooking all the time.
Yeah, but do we need them clear up, do we need them a mile, let's see, that's one mile, two miles north on Main Street? Like, like that map show, do we need them clear up there?
No, that's too far, that's too far.
But that's according to this.
That's too far, I don't know, all that land, or the.
Oh, it's a combination of few, but traps, that's quite a bit of it, but there's some other houses, different names, I'm not sure it's his or someone else's.
Jim, Jim, tell me, I've got a bunch of.
Yeah, there's several people that own big, of course.
That's what I'd like to develop.
We have a survey results from that, but it's, I'm not sure, I mean, it talks about where to put commercial and there's some people that just said, oh, all of the major should be commercial. And then there's some people said, only first half mile, some said, only mile. I think most of them came back the first mile.
Yeah.
And then.
That's a lot of push.
That's a long way, huh?
That's a lot.
And at the, at the point that you have one mile that filled up, you know, and nothing else is developed, you can always say, okay, another half mile or whatever. But at least it concentrates it in that first mile.
Yeah.
For the initial first build and twenty years from now, along that front lawn. I mean, like I say, that all the so, you know, now further, you know, but, um.
Like if you have your first grandbaby, it's not gonna be gone for a long time. I'm looking at great grand children.
So, anyway, we'll coordinate that together and we'll put out some, uh.
Yeah, we'll do some surveys.
Send in feedback to people on, so if you have a target area you wanna do a month from now, you gotta, two months from now, you let me know, I'll put a survey together.
Okay, we need to get that sent, yeah, to take care of our address assignment and start it. And get together, we, well, only three of us, we have, we have open, we have to be, it's more than three.
Um, more than two, isn't it?
No, three.
Yeah, more than two.
More than two. That would be a car.
Unless we meet each other in, in Walmart by accident.
You can do a lot of this, you can do a lot of this by email maybe and that's okay.
Well, I'm, I'm not the map and I think we ought to.
Yeah, it'd be hard.
I, I think we ought to do what the mayor says and just do some surveys first. And then we can get together and get together with, uh, with, yeah. And then we can bring it up and, and really show what we'd like to see.
Yeah, that's gonna be a bone of contention for all the hearing.
Yeah, you're never gonna please everybody, I guess.
We're not gonna please everybody, but like, you know, like, when I moved to Hurricane, the Taco Bell was the edge of town. That's where the, that's where the Arctic bird was at. And the pool was right across the street.
Uh.
And my dad was on the flight commission, he didn't want to change. And look at it now, you know, we live on four hundred south and we live in the fields.
Really out in the fields.
Yeah, it was, since we have an old tire hole, you know, so.
Do we have any way of updating the zoning map at this point?
This is the most current, the zoning map.
Okay, so you, you have been updating?
I think you were observing.
We still need to do, we need to update.
He just.
Thoughts that he didn't even realize.
Yeah, we'll be working on it.
Came up in the survey.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Give some.
There's a one thing that we can get is if everybody would fill out the survey.
I will, I will double check you.
Well, I appreciate that you give plenty of time.
Right, and you came up with suggestions on the main street that you didn't even realize until people suggested.
Right.
So that was a great.
I might change my picture on what the main street showed.
Yeah, I hope maybe you had, because.
We gotta see the emergency.
Yeah, it's two acres.
To change.
And we might as well do it.
Yeah, that's the whole, yeah, hold the bearin', whatever it was.
Well, we give a.
And another one somewhere.
We have a report that's, and then he's assigned at a, uh. Subject or name or something on it.
You said.
I think it's more just listen.
I'm like, listen, what was it?
We had a more.
Okay, we, okay, we are bringing that, um, both on, on High Dynasty, Low Dynasty on our meeting on the twenty eighth. And we're also. I'll talk to Mike.
I appreciate it, you're me now.
Thank you, listen.
Yeah.